Okay, thank you all for your patience while we were in executive session. We had an opportunity to have two motions, so... Oh, just one.
It needs to be two, right?
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to close our executive session.
I'll make a motion to close executive session.
Aye, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, the ayes have it. We had one motion in executive session, and I would like to entertain that we approve... Entertain a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute in substantial form intergovernmental agreements with Cobb County for GIS and zoning services.
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute in substantial form intergovernmental agreements with Cobb County for GIS and zoning services.
Aye, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, the ayes have it. Alright, we've already closed our executive session, so we're gonna move on to our public hearings. Let's see here. No public hearings. Oh, wow. Alright, the next agenda item is presentation acknowledgements and proclamations. We have a proclamation on the agenda, item 7A, recognizing Arbor Day 2025. And just to give you some historical context, Arbor Day was founded in Nebraska in 1872. It has since grown into a nationally recognized day for planting and promoting the health of trees in our communities. National Arbor Day is celebrated on the last Friday of April, but different states observe Arbor Day on various days throughout the year depending upon the ideal tree planting times. But here in Georgia, we observe Arbor Day on the third Friday of February. Additionally, issuing an annual Arbor Day proclamation is a requirement for becoming a certified tree city here. And so that's what the overall intent is for us to become a certified tree city. It serves as an opportunity for us to reflect on the many ways trees enrich our lives. They enhance the beauty of our city. They improve our air and water quality and provide habitats for wildlife. And beyond that, the environmental benefits, trees contribute to our physical and mental well-being, offering shade, reducing energy costs, and creating spaces for recreation and social engagement. Not to mention they're beautiful, right? They enhance our aesthetic appeal of our neighborhoods, creating peaceful green spaces where people can gather, relax, and find respite from the stresses of daily life. By observing this day, we not only recognize the importance of trees, but we also encourage each of us to plant, care for, and preserve these vital natural resources. So today, we want to recognize the invaluable roles trees play in making our city a healthier and more vibrant place to live. So now I'm gonna read the proclamation, officially recognizing Arbor Day in our city. Whereas the first Arbor Day was celebrated in 1872 in Nebraska and was recognized as a special day to plant trees and promote the preservation, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed nationwide and marks the ideal time to plant trees in Georgia in the coming of the spring season, and whereas trees play a vital role in the community by providing a habitat for wildlife, reducing topsoil erosion, improving public health and air-water quality, increasing energy efficiency through shade, beautifying public spaces, and promoting economic vitality. And whereas trees are a renewable resource that provide paper, wood, fuel, and countless other wood products, and whereas Arbor Day in Georgia is a time for community and environmental leaders to promote tree education and foster new growth, and whereas the city of Mableton is committed to maintaining a healthy tree canopy coverage in the city, and whereas the residents of the city of Mableton are encouraged to care for and plant trees in their communities to leave a legacy for current and future generations. Now therefore I, Keisha Jufco, deputy mayor of the city of Mableton, do hereby proclaim February 21, 2005, as Arbor Day 2025 in Mableton, Georgia, and encourage all residents, businesses, and community partners to help promote healthy trees and plant for future generations, one tree at a time. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and seal this 26th day of February 2025. Yeah, we all love trees. Alright, now we're moving on to item 8A, which is our finance director appointment. We have a finance director nomination. It's taken us a while to get here, but thankful to our staff and our leadership, our city manager, Bill Tanks, as well as city council. We have combed and looked and tried to find the best talent to come to the city of Mableton to help us and lead our finance department. And our director nomination, Karen Ellis comes from the city of Milton, and she was able to obviously successfully pass the functional and cultural fit. The mayor has given his recommendation and her appointment, and so I will allow you, city manager.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor Protem. Ms. Karen Ellis comes to us with a broad base of experience in every facet of the finance department. She has purchasing experience, she has accounts payable, accounts receivable, policies, she's participated in bond ratings, she's done budgets, had the whole package for many, many years. Very knowledgeable, very intelligent. We had to kind of lure her here and tell her about Mableton, and she called and we had a great conversation. She called on to answer, hey, I wanna come work with Mableton. And I was very excited, the conversations with her, her knowledge, she's already taught me a few things that we could do, and I consider myself relatively smart, but it's nice to have people around here smarter than you, so she's definitely not, so I'm glad to see the council nominate her. She is in the audience, Ms. Mayor Protem, if you wanted to give a few comments, she's available.
Okay. Okay, you wanna provide some comments for us?
Hello, everyone. I wanted to thank city manager, as well as mayor and council, to afford me this great opportunity to join the city of Mableton. I have shared the address of Mableton since 2005. I first moved here, I actually live in Smyrna, so I'm right around the corner. It's gonna be a beautiful commute compared to going from Milton. So I'm just so excited to start here and help build the city along with your wonderful council and city manager. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for that. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to nominate financial director Karen Ellis as our financial director for the city of Mableton.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Karen Ellis as our financial director.
I second.
Oh, great. Is there any discussion or comments that anyone may have? No comment? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Okay, we have a new finance director for the city of Mableton. I'm really excited to have you on board, so welcome. So now we'll go ahead and move down to item 12, which is new business.
Do we wanna do public comments?
Public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that. Alright, let's backtrack. We're gonna go to item nine, public comments. Okay. Each speaker, oh, okay, each speaker will have two minutes to address the council. The total minutes is 30 minutes, and I will allow our city clerk to provide more information about that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have only had one card submitted, and that is Sam Cobruth.
I promise I'll be brief. Good evening, city of Mableton and council and staff. I am Sam Cobruth. I am the current chairman of the Off-Stale Community Task Force. I always try to plug the organization. I also wanted to give a congratulations. I think it was a great civic victory with the forum that we had in conjunction with the Powder Springs Community Task Force and the Mableton Improvement Coalition. We had a packed house, standing room only, at the South Cobb, South Cobb Recre- South Cobb Community Center of about 150 folks. So, great turnout for that for the District Four Town Hall, and just wanted to invite everybody out to our monthly meeting. We do have one taking place this coming Monday, March 3rd, at 7:00 PM, and it'll be taking place at the South Cobb Recreational Center. We do have Zoom option available, but we strongly encourage you to come in person and connect with the community as a whole, and thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobruth. Any other comment cards? That's it? Okay. Thank you, we always appreciate the feedback that we get from our residents and our constituents. So, thank you for providing your comment. We're gonna move now down to item 12, new business. We've had an opportunity to have discussions around these items during our work session. And on item 12A, consideration and approval of a resolution adopting an official tree, our SWV director, Emily Groth, will give us more context around this. But since we've recognized our first Arbor Day, it's only fitting for us to adopt an official tree. We are considering the adoption of the Willow Oak as the official tree of Mableton, and it's popular in this local area. Specifically, you can find them encircling the perimeter of the Mableton Town Square Park, and it's a tree that represents resilience, growth, and strength of our city. So it's more than just a designation. And by making it our official tree, we reinforce our dedication to fostering a greener, healthier, more vibrant city. So at this time, I have our SWV director, Emily Groth, come and provide us with more information. She's gonna present us with a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, and council, and folks in the audience. Tonight, I'll be very brief, just with some background information about adopting the Willow Oak as the city tree. Next slide, please. We'll be brief, I'll go over background, any financial impact, there is none. Additional resources and recommendation, next steps. Next slide, please. So, a lot of cities do this to enhance branding and environmental heritage. The city of Mableton could adopt the Willow Oak as the city's official tree. This is being considered a few days after Georgia Arbor Day, but on the same night as the city of Mableton's Arbor Day proclamation. Nearby municipalities also do this. You'll see them listed here, once we get, yes. City of Stonecrest, city of Smyrna, and city of Atlanta is a popular one with the Dogwood Festival. So we're right in line with industry and best practice. Next, please. The Willow Oak is native, basically all over. It's very popular here. It's popular in our parks and communities and landscapes. It's a street tree, you can see him a lot in medians. They're very friendly, very hardy, very robust. They provide shade, full sun, part shade, very versatile. They have good seasonal color, and the Mableton Town Square was the inspiration to select these trees. I do believe there's some other oaks in that property, so we kind of landed on using the Mableton Town Square Park as a comprehensive inspiration with similar trees that you can find there. This is an important part in our future branding, environmental initiatives. You can consider different placemaking efforts incorporated with this for the city of Mableton. These are draft concepts that I created, nothing hard and fast right now, but just to get the, just to get the idea. There's no financial impact to do this. Any future tree plantings or programs could be supported by the Sustainability Waste Beautification Budget, if so desired by mayor and council. And it's important to note that it's not just myself, I'm not a certified arborist, just one by hobby, so I do have a little room for error here, but I found some backing with Trees Atlanta, and I know the mayor, and I believe some members on council are willing to find some support in Trees Atlanta, so I wanted to provide this external resource that Trees Atlanta has listed the Willow Oak in the top 50 trees for our region as well. No next step. We could consider a partnership with Trees Atlanta and certainly certified arborists, and as I said, this could be incorporated in future programming. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. Any questions?
I actually do have a question. Can you talk more about, you said Trees Atlanta? And what the selection process was?
So, I work closely with the mayor to try and find a location in Mableton that we can, you know, recognize and see in ourselves. Mableton Town Square Park, even just by name, is our town square, city park. I know it's home to the Mableton Elementary, so it's centrally located, so just by virtue of the name, that's where I looked. I also looked at the Maple House, and there are some trees there, different oak varieties that do encircle that perimeter. So I think this was the first step. The Willow Oak is a safe tree, uniform tree all across the metro Atlanta region. But I think our next step would be to consider and work more closely with tree professionals. I don't, certainly don't, I only play one at council, but I think that'll be our next step, get Trees Atlanta on board. Our city manager also has connections with the Cobb County UGA Extension, so regardless of where any Willow tree, oak trees are now in the city, I think we can further put some weight behind it, once we get professional staff.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, if there aren't any further questions, I'd like to entertain a motion for consideration and approval of a resolution adopting an official city tree.
Motion to-
Which will be the white Willow Oak? No, we can just say official tree, that's all.
Yeah.
Alright, make a motion to-
Are you asking permission?
I'm asking for a motion, yes.
I make a motion to approve the resolution adopting an official city tree.
You wanna go second?
I second.
Is there any discussion around this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Alright, looks like we have an official city tree, the Willow Oak. Alright. We're gonna move on to item 12B. This is consideration and approval for mayor to finalize and execute a plan review and engineering service agreement in substantial form with Croy within the parameters of the approved spending plan. We just had discussion around this firm actually coming in and providing plan review and engineering services to include land disturbance permits, review plat- as-built review, and a variety of special report reviews. We don't have the personnel staffing to do the work, so we're gonna contract it out to Croy to help with that until we hire, hopefully in the future, a chief building inspector or an officer. And I'll allow our city manager, Mr. Tanks, if he wants to provide more context regarding it.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor Protem. This is what we call complimentary services for our planning and zoning service that we will activate March 13th. As you know, we're already starting to get inquiries from developers and people that wanna start making, doing developments and build things, or come through our planning and zoning process here in the city. So this engineering service is part of that process to have the plans reviewed, and as you're right, we do not have an in-house engineer in the city, but we wanna be self-sufficient and be able to act, even though we may have agreements in place with the county. This gives us an option to use Croy at our discretion, on the card, as we need. And so this is gonna help us carry out one of those required minimum services facility active status, which is our Chapter 10, planning and zoning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for consideration and approval for mayor to finalize and execute a plan review and engineering services agreement in substantial form with Croy within the parameters of the approved spending plan.
I make a motion that, for the consideration-
I make a motion that, for the consideration and approval for the mayor to finalize and execute a plan review and engineering service agreement in substantial form with Croy within the parameters of the approved spending plan.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion around this item? I know we've talked about it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion has been approved. Now, we'll move on to item 12C, which is consideration and approval for mayor to negotiate and execute in substantial form the subscription and agreement with Cloud Permit for permitting, licensing, inspections, and code enforcement services for the first year of $28,000. We've had discussions around this item. We know that we've already purchased GovPilot a few months ago, but there's been a gap. And as reinforcement or as a contingency, we want to approve the Cloud Permit software, which is a web-based solution. It allows municipalities to streamline and manage the permitting process online, and it also replaces paper-based systems with a centralized digital platform. And so we want to go with this to allow our city manager the option to utilize this in the event that GovPilot isn't deployable. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for consideration and approval for mayor to negotiate and execute in substantial form the subscription and agreement with Cloud Permit for permitting, licensing, inspections, and code enforcement services with the first year for $28,000.
I'd like to make a motion for consideration and approval for the mayor to negotiate and execute in substantial form the subscription and agreement with Cloud Permit for permitting, licensing, inspection, and code enforcement services with the first year being $28,000.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion on this particular item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Okay. We'll move on to the next item, which is item 12D. It's consideration and approval for mayor to execute in substantial form in agreement with MCCI for Laserfish Cloud Document Records Management and Content Services Platform for the first year of $26,000. This particular vendor is a company that provides government-focused technology, and the service is for this Laserfish Cloud. It's a cloud-based document and records management platform. And I will let our city clerk, Clerk Hoyt, give us a little bit more information regarding that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. This is a platform that a lot of cities use throughout Georgia, and it allows us to store our records permanently or either put on a retention schedule, but to have a record storage. And that storage would include the clerk's permanent records, deeds, and ordinances, resolutions, all kinds of stuff, and a lot of the community development records. We will be getting a lot of records from Cobb County and intend to get those records into this platform.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I do need to explain. It's $26,000 for the first year because we have implementation expenses and training and setting it up. But the next year will be $13,000. It's a subscription cloud-based.
And that's $13,000 every subsequent year after that? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for consideration and approval for mayor to execute in substantial form in agreement with MCCI for Laserfish Cloud Document Records Management and Content Services Platform, first year $26,000.
I'd like to make a motion for consideration and approval for the mayor to execute in substantial form in agreement with MCCI for Laserfish Cloud Document Records Management and Content Services Platform, first year $26,000.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on this? I know we've had conversations earlier.
Just one quick question. Do we know which cloud they use?
I'm sorry, I don't have the expertise to know that. I can find out for you, Councilmember. Unless it's in the documents.
Yeah, I was just trying to see it in the document. I didn't see this.
We'll find out.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second?
I second.
I already seconded it.
Oh, you did? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, let's have it. All right, the next item is item 12E. This is a first read of an ordinance creating Chapter 11, Environment and Natural Resources, Article 1, Soil Erosion, Sedimentation, and Pollution Control. And Attorney Ashby, can you provide more information on this particular one?
Yes, Mayor Protem. So this ordinance is actually the creation of a new chapter under the Mableton Code of Ordinances. This is modeled off state recommendations. It's a state-modeled ordinance. It deals with, it's basically the start of your environment and your natural resources component of your chapter, I mean of your code. And this is first read. The request would be to proceed with adoption at your next regular meeting.
So that means we're not going to have a second read, is what you're saying? Because this is the first one?
Well, yes. So your second read would, the second read would be at your next regular meeting. Yes, and then adopted that meeting, correct.
Is there any further discussion on this particular item? Okay. We'll go ahead and move forward with item 12F, which is the consideration and approval for mayor to finalize and execute a readiness assessment and consulting proposal in substantial form with metric 1 in the amount not to exceed the parameters of the approved spending plan. We had an opportunity to talk about this company conducting a comprehensive gap analysis and a real-time assessment on our community development program. And the reason we're doing this is because it's going to help us identify any gaps that we have and any inefficiencies and areas of improvement. And then we can streamline our services for our residents and for our businesses. It's just going to enhance our overall effectiveness and compliance. Mr. Tanks, I mean, city manager Tanks, any comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor Protem. You listen very well, and you explain things very well. I listened to you explain the last two items that I presented in the work session, and you nailed exactly what you explained. This is really a gap service. Most times, anytime in planning, when you're in theory, you can have all kinds of ideals, but as Michael Dyson says, everybody has a plan until they get punched in the mouth. But I want to make sure we got a mouthpiece, and that's what metric 1 is. It's a backup plan to make sure we can look and see if we missed any gaps and quickly identify those and adjust quickly, so we can service our citizens. So I didn't need to add anything you explained that go wrong.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion for consideration and approval for mayor to finalize and execute a readiness assessment and consulting proposal in substantial form with metric 1 in the amount not to exceed the parameters of the approved spending plan.
I make a motion that, for the consideration and approval for the mayor to finalize and execute a readiness assessment and consulting proposal in substantial form with metric 1 in the amount not to exceed the parameters of the approved spending plan.
A second.
Is there any more discussion on this item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, the motion has been granted. All right, now this moves us to item 13, other business and discussion. Item 13A is the review and discussion, which is a continuation from the discussion that we've had regarding updating the zoning and permitting fee schedule and for other lawful purposes. At our last meeting, we had some discussions around some of the fees, and we've been able to go back and make some modifications on those fees for the fee schedule. And this particular one that we discussed in our work session has changed from an ordinance, I believe, to a resolution, which allows for... Quicker, right? I think that's what you said. City Attorney?
Well, not necessarily quicker. We're on the same schedule, but more consistent and compatible with certain updates to the schedule in the zoning code.
Yes, so we've had a lot of discussion around this. You don't need anything else from us on this particular item?
No, Mayor Protem. This will come back before the council at your next workshop, March 10, for a public hearing where the public can also comment on this item.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item 13B, which is consideration and approval of resolution placing a moratorium on acceptance of zoning application and requests until March 13, 2025. So we have been aggressively trying to get our services in place, in particular, planning and zoning. We've had to make some adjustments to our timeline, and we would like to obviously have a moratorium because we've had some changes and some new additions to our staff. And so it's important that we allow enough time so that we get this right. And that's a 10-day, I don't want to say extension, a 10-day delay. We were supposed to go live on March 3, but that's been now pushed down out to March 13. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for consideration and approval of resolution placing a moratorium on acceptance of zoning applications and requests until March 13, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution placing a moratorium on the acceptance of zoning applications until March 13, 2025.
A second.
Is there any other discussion around this item? Okay. All those in favor of approving this item for consideration and approval of resolution placing a moratorium on acceptance of zoning applications and requests until March 13, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. This item has been approved. Okay, so now we are down to, our city manager, do you have any announcements or comments?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I want to publicly congratulate Ms. Nari Simpson, and as our employee that has achieved one-year anniversary. Yes, we have a one-year career. Also, we've had a recent hire, a new IT technician, Ms. Shaquila. She started two days ago and has already impressed me with her knowledge and fixed a few things, even someone had an issue with locked-up computers. She knocked it out, so glad to have her, boy, we'll get a chance to meet her in the future. And then our HR lead, Ms. Candace Fields, has brought to my attention that March 7 is Employee Appreciation Day. And she has come up with a plan to show our employees that they are appreciated. So those things, I always want to continue to say, thanks to council for supporting me in the paying class and attracting some very good talent to the city. And they are excited about their work. And I always want to publicly thank them, and also thank you all for, again, allowing us to get that kind of staff here in the city. We've got a great team.
Thank you. City Attorney?
No comments, Mayor Protem.
City Clerk?
Excuse me, no comment. I apologize. We do have a new position that, well, actually, it's a move-up. I have a deputy clerk now, and I'm very thankful. Allison Benson will be my deputy clerk, and she's back there listening and taking in a lot of information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, District 1, Councilman Davis?
Just briefly, I just want to say, great job for staff. We went on our planning conference this weekend, this past weekend. It was excellent, excellent content, excellent. Everything was just great food, I mean, everything. But they did an excellent job. And I'm always, like I said before, I'm a lifelong learner, and I really believe in actually getting the most you can in terms of education to do the best job you possibly can in any position. I've always been that way. So, and this has been no exception, so great job there. Always a great honor to work with this council and the mayor. I can't think of a better team that I've worked with outside of the banking industry. So kudos to each and every one of you. And I'm going to go kind of on a side note here. Somebody that kind of near and dear to me in terms of back in my other life as a musician and a writer. We lost Roberta Flack this week, and she was such an elegant lady. I was writing years ago with a guy named Robert Funches, and she actually just was so gracious in listening to what we had to offer. And just my condolences to the family, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. District 2, Councilwoman O'Doppo?
Good evening, everyone. No major comments tonight, but I really want to echo Councilman Davis. The spring conference was wonderful. Thank you to all of the staff who set that up. We did learn a lot. And also, congratulations to Ms. Benson on her promotion or new role as the Assistant Clerk. I know that Susan is really happy to get the help there and also welcome to our new Finance Director. And congratulations to Ms. Nari. We just have amazing and wonderful things going on with the staff in the City of Mableton. I'm really happy to see all the growth and all the success that you all are achieving. So thank you for all of your effort, and great to see you all tonight. I hope you have a safe trip back home.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Doppo. Councilwoman Ock?
Hey, good evening, everyone. I want to congratulate, Karen Ellis is our new Finance Director, and Allison Benson is becoming our new Deputy Clerk. And I want to thank our Wasteland Sustainability Director, Emily Groth, for your research and work in finding us a city tree. Something that means a lot to me, and I think it really sets the tone on what Mableton feels about environmental sustainability and being greener and cleaner. And I'm very excited about it, and I think you picked a really good tree, and I did my research to make sure you did, so thank you. So just thank you all. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ock. I always mess that up. Councilman Ferguson, District 5?
Really, really brief, since everybody said congratulations to everybody. You've heard it 15 times. The only thing I want to bring up is I will be hosting a town hall, so mark your calendars for St. Patrick's Day, March 17. It will be at...
At the South Cobb Regional Library.
The library.
Yes.
Yes. I can't read lips that far. Yeah, and I'm excited. I'm excited to continue having conversations and hearing from you all what we want to do in our district. And I want to make sure that I give an opportunity to also update you all on what's been happening and plans for... to also update you all on what's been happening and plans for the future. So, oh, I'm sorry, 6:30? South Cobb Regional Library, March 17th.
Okay, St. Patty's Day.
St. Patty's Day. I'll be in green.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have very many comments. I'm just marveling at how much Mabelton is growing. It's like every week that we have new staff that has been hired and we have been having some exceptional choices in a lot of the positions that, you know, that have been filled here. I also, I echo Councilmember Ock. I am so excited about the, you know, waste management and sustainability and beautification. That's one of the areas that I've really been looking really closely at, you know, because I really want to see the growth and the evolution of Mabelton. And I'm really excited about some of your initiatives that you brought up during our planning conference. So outside of that, it's so good to see so many people out today and thank you for coming and supporting the city of Mabelton and safe travels home.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ock. Okay, I have a few comments I'd like to say. I'll try to be brief. I know our city manager said, "Be bold, be brief, and be gone." I got two out of the three, so. So one of the privilege, last week we held our spring planning conference. As so many of us up here have said, it went really well. But I'd really have to acknowledge our staff, our council, and guest speakers. Over four days, we had an opportunity to engage in critical discussions on transitioning services. The Mabelton Development Authority chairman was there. We discussed district planning, which was really nice because we each had an opportunity to reimagine what we wanted our districts to look like. And so I thought that was great. We talked about budgeting and sustainability and conflict management and so many other things. And we even had a chance to go visit Sugar Hill again, which was impressive, to say the least, in terms of the development that they've done there. And just to have some insight so we can have an idea of how we want to push this city forward. So I thought that was good. And then I want to take the opportunity to thank our guest speakers that came. We had a lot of great speakers to come and provide their level of expertise and guidance to help us navigate and talk about, you know, the important topics that we had to talk about. I do want to thank, again, our city manager, Bill Tanks, clerk, and our city attorney, our department directors, all of the staff. And the work that was done behind the scenes from a logistical standpoint. They did a great job making sure we had everything that we need and that we were productive at the conference. So that was great. And I thank everyone up here on this council that did such a great job with providing, you know, their engagement, collaboration, all of that. It was really good. And then also, Grace Consulting came out to provide us with an update. Allison, were you able to? Okay, perfect. So if you haven't already, I wanted to share this because it's important that we get engagement from our community. But the first QR code is for Mabelton 2045 website. It's going to provide important details on the planning process, our focus areas, and any upcoming engagement opportunities. So we need our community input. It's really important for us to have that so that we can have a successful plan. So we want to hear from everybody, our residents, our business owners, stakeholders. So if you haven't done so, please take the opportunity to scan the second QR ID code, which is to the survey. It'll ask you your opinion and some questions about what's happening in our community, what you would like to see. So that's important. Next. They're also conducting stakeholder interviews. So if you fall in either one of these categories, please get with your respective council person and they will write your name down so you can be a part of a stakeholder interview. It's like a focus group. Grace Consulting will get your ideas. So this is important. So make sure you reach out to your council person as soon as possible because I think the deadline is fast approaching so that we can get your feedback. Next. So this is important. It's always a privilege to recognize the achievements of our school students and educators. And today, I really want to highlight some of the outstanding work that's going on at Pebblebrook High School under the great leadership of Dr. G. I want to take a moment to really celebrate these exceptional student athletes. All three of them have earned full academic and athletic, full scholarships to continue their academic and athletic careers. And if you have, if you've never been a student athlete, it's very challenging, very tough. So I want to congratulate Trent Chapman, who will be attending Carson Newman Christian University, Dontavious Carter, who is heading the Guardian City Community College, and Malik Leggett, who will continue his journey at West Virginia State University. These young men, they've worked tirelessly, not just in the classroom, but also on the field. And their hard work and discipline and preservation, preserv-
Preserv-
Preserv- Why can't I say that word? Preservance. I can't say that word tonight. Thank you. Have paid off. So let's give them a round of applause. That was a tongue twister. Okay. Now, we also want to rally behind Pebblebrook High School's varsity boys' basketball team as they take on Walton High School. The game is going on right now because Pebblebrook is in the final four. This is huge. This is a huge moment for the team, for the school, just the entire community. We encourage everyone to come out. We know we weren't able to make it to tonight's game, but hopefully they'll win and we'll get a chance to see these talented athletes do their thing, you know, at Pebblebrook High School. So that's great. And then finally, Pebblebrook continued to raise the bar in academics. They're launching their STEM Academy of Advanced Academics and Innovative Technology. This is a groundbreaking program. It's going to provide students with an opportunity to explore coding and artificial intelligence. And it's going to prepare them for those careers in the future. So applications are now open. I just want to encourage families to take advantage of this incredible opportunity for students. And it's just going to help give them the skill set that they need to move into, you know, world where technology and AI is on the cutting. You know, we're doing that right now, right? So there's a paradigm shift with that occurring. And I just want to just thank Dr. G for her leadership and everything that she's doing at Pebblebrook High School. There is a ribbon-cutting ceremony that's going to take place on Friday. This is huge because Mabelton is taking a huge step towards sustainability and innovation. And it's going to happen right here at the Riverside Epicenter. It's going to be the new home for the largest Tesla charging stations in the metro Atlanta area. It's going to happen on Friday, February 28th, at 11:00 a.m. And so what this means for Mabelton is that there are going to be 30 new EV charging stations available. There's a plan for, to increase to 64. It's going to support our commitment on green and clean energy and sustainability. And the great news is that it's strategically placed on I-20. And so that's going to bring more visitors, more economic growth, all that stuff, so. And then lastly, I don't know if that's right, well, I will be having, save the date for my District Three Town Hall meeting. It's going to take place on Monday, March 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at our new Cobb Works, which is in my district. So it'll be an opportunity for me to hear from the constituents, get updates, hear your concerns. You can ask questions, learn more about, you know, some of the things that are happening in District Three. And then lastly, this is more on a personal note. Today is the anniversary of my grandfather's passing. His name was Willie Clay Jeffcoat. He was a common man. He was a farmer. But in my eyes, he was a giant. He's a, just was a man of few words, many actions, and someone that loved his community. He was a community organizer. He worked tirelessly as a business owner, worked in corporate, and did whatever he could do to provide for his family, everything that was legal. He had 11 children and numerous grandchildren. And he and my grandmother gave us the blueprint to do what I'm doing now. And now the day goes by that I don't think about him and my grandmother. And that's a huge reason why I do a lot of the work that I do. So with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion. If there are any other questions, to adjourn our city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to adj-
Go ahead.
Okay.
You got it, Amy.
My motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I know there's no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming out. Drive safely and see you at our next meeting.
I'll beat the record.